Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Town of Air Select meeting, the Air Select, special meeting of the Air Select Board for Tuesday, August 6, 2020-24. This meeting, hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, the Assistant Town Manager, at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to this meeting. We can all stand. First item tonight is going to be hearing from the state legislative delegation for an update on the proposed closing of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the Air Select Board and Town Manager Robert Pontbrand and Assistant Town Manager Carly Antonellis for allowing us to say a few words with this emergency meeting by the Air Select Board to address the crisis of the potential closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. State Senator Jamie Eldredge, very proud to represent AIR for 16 years and the Neshoba Valley area for 22 years. And just to think that just a week ago in the morning on late July, we had incredible rally here of, I think, about 300 people of Neshoba Valley Medical Center professional staff, patients, residents, town officials, public safety leaders, community leaders, business leaders, to speak out against the potential closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center by the financial mismanagement of Stuart Healthcare. So I want to thank everyone for being so responsive with a particular gratitude on the Select Board. Of course, all the Select Board have reached out, but I know in particular Janice Livingston had reached out to myself and Representative Sina a few weeks ago. And we have a very close working relationship with Robert Pontbrand and Carly Antonellis, as well as the professional staff at Neshoba Valley Medical Center and especially the Union Mass Nurses Association. So in terms of the update, I do just want to provide the latest letter. I'm just going to pass this to all the Select Board members of the letter that has been signed by more and more elected officials, both legislators and municipal officials, including in Boston, given the potential closure of the Carney Hospital in Dorchester. So this is the latest letter that we have sent to Governor Healy, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, Secretary Walsh, the HHS Secretary, and DPH Commissioner Goldstein. And we first just, you know, the message I just want to say before highlighting the letter is that I want to send a message to my constituents of the Neshoba Valley region and all the communities that are served by the hospital, that we are at the legislative level as legislators for this area and legislators in the Boston area. We are not giving up. We're continuing to fight back. And I hope that people realize that as concerning as the situation is and as dire as it is, and to be frank, it is dire, that we are seeing movement by the administration. So hopefully people have seen, and this was largely due to the work of many of the people in this room, is that, you know, Governor Healy now has been clear that there needs to be 120 days before any hospital facility closes. I know that there was a meeting with nurses and Governor Healy last week in Leominster where there was a productive conversation about providing state funding if there is a qualified bidder for the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. And while I don't have all the details about potential bidders, there certainly have been more and more stories about potential bidders for the hospital. So we're continuing to advocate for that, and clearly it's critical to have, you know, state funding to make that possible, whether it's bridge funding or whether it's support for the hospitals and the potential new owners. In terms of what we have asked the administration for is that, just list the items here, is that, and this is in the letter, which is noted on my website, senatorseldredge.com, under official correspondence, but it would be to reach out, this is asking the administration to reach out to any prospective hospital bidder, including Massachusetts healthcare networks to purchase both hospitals. Second, to declare a public health state of emergency, to broaden government powers to keep the two hospitals open, to provide bridge funding to keep Neshoba Valley Medical Center and Carney Hospital in operation while negotiations for potential buyers of hospitals, and really to get a stronger commitment from the Healy and Driscoll administration. I really want to lift up the fact that, you know, the legislature and the governor have just passed and signed a fiscal year budget. We just passed a supplemental budget. So there are funds out there that, you know, I believe are possible to help the Neshoba Valley region, and so we're going to continue to advocate for that. And someone who has also really just been an incredible leader for this area is our colleague, Representative Margaret Scarsdale from Pepperill, but represents many of the communities, including Groton and Pepperill, is that she has reached out, I know Representative Sina and I have begun to do it as well, is reach out to all of our public safety leaders, so, you know, for the most part, our fire chiefs, to make sure it's very clear to DPH Commissioner Dr. Robert Goldstein that it would be an absolutely devastating impact for EMS and fire departments, for the safety of tens of thousands of residents in the Neshoba Valley region if the Neshoba Valley Medical Center were to close, talking about obviously the extra time it would take for to bring an ambulance or other emergency vehicle to another hospital that could be 20, 25, or 30 minutes away, that the very close partnership that the Neshoba Valley Medical Center has with the fire service and EMS in these communities would obviously be gone, and communicating to Public Health Commissioner Goldstein that, you know, his mission obviously is to ensure proper healthcare access for every region of Massachusetts, and that would have an extremely detrimental effect if the hospital would close. So I would close and say to Chairman Copeland is thank you so much to the Select Board for reaching out to us. Again, this is just the latest correspondence we're doing. It's obviously a sort of quickly evolving discussion around both hospitals, but I do think we've gotten the governor's attention, we've clearly gotten the media's attention, and so grateful for the grassroots work, the work of the nurses, doctors, the Mass Nurses Association, and residents here in general for all their terrific work, and really, again, really want to echo my appreciation to Robert Pontbrand, to Carly Antonellis, and the Select Board for taking such quick action, and I'm hopeful for quick action tonight. So thank you so much.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to say a few words here tonight. I echo what Senator Eldredge has said. I mean, we have worked with, together to send a letter to the governor's office, to the Department of Human Services, and also we, my office, a letter to the Attorney General requesting to use every tool that you can to delay this closure. Now, certainly I've heard from many, many constituents and many residents that they lived in AIR or they want to live around this area because of the hospital, because of the quality of life they're giving to the residents. And certainly, I have relied on the Neshoba myself for healthcare, so certainly it's going to impact all of us, and what can we do? I mean, my goal, or my hope for the future on this closure, if it does indeed happen and it looks like at least there's nothing changing, and I would like to see those bits more transparency, or I would like to see more information so that we, the public is aware who's a potential buyer. During this crisis, I received a call from a doctor, homeless, said the best care, the best method for us to provide care without this, to avoid some of these corruption that are kind of happening, this mismanagement, if I may say, with those funds or profits, is for a nonprofit to governor or to take over a new facility. And so my goal is that we have a transition, working together with the public and with the governmental officials to see what we can do, but my hope is that there is a nonprofit that can come and take over, but I know that it's not in our control at the moment, but we're certainly applying pressure and having these conversations with the stakeholders to make sure that there's a transition, that at least that's what I hope to see. Certainly, we don't want any care to be, you know, not provided. We certainly, I'm sure the state would do everything we can to provide those funds if it is necessary for us to, you know, have a transition, but don't know where that stands yet, but certainly would have our support.
Thank you, Senator Eldredge and Speaker Senna. Our next agenda item is going to be reading the Select Board's official resolution requesting emergency declaration regarding the proposed closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center into the record. Board Member Livingston?
Official resolution requesting emergency declaration regarding the proposed closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center, August 6, 2024. We, the duly-elected AIR Select Board, given the impending proposed closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center, NVMC, scheduled for August 31, 2024, officially implore that Governor Maury Healy of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts exert her leadership and official powers to prevent the closure of the NVMC, including but not limited to declaring a state of public health emergency to prevent the closure of the NVMC, in addition to formally adhering to the 120-day closure process in accordance with Massachusetts state law. Whereas the NVMC in AIR Massachusetts is a 46-bed community hospital opened in 1964, which has continuously provided primary critical healthcare, including emergency health services to the 15 towns of the Neshoba Valley region of AIR, Ashby, Bolton, Foxborough, Devers, Dunstable, Groton, Harvard, Lancaster, Littleton, Pepperill, Shirley, Stowe, Townsend, and Westford, with a combined population of approximately 114,391. Additionally, the Neshoba Valley Medical Center provides critical secondary emergency care to the other communities of North Central Massachusetts and Southern New Hampshire, and whereas the NVMC receives approximately 16,000 emergency room visits annually and receives approximately 91,000 outpatient visits annually, and whereas the NVMC is geographically positioned in a key location to provide central, direct healthcare and emergency services to rural communities which do not have access to public mass transportation for patients to travel beyond the region for healthcare and emergency health services, including our most vulnerable populations of the elderly, disability, community, and children, and whereas currently the Town of AIR's Emergency Response, Advanced Life Support, averages a 15- to 20-minute return to service when transporting to the NVMC, which is only 2.4 miles from the AIR Fire Station. The closest alternative hospitals to the Town of AIR are as follows: Leominster Hospital, 11.5 miles; Emerson Hospital, 16.8 miles; Lowell General, 19.7 miles; and Southern New Hampshire, Nashua, 18.6 miles. If NVMC closes AIR Emergency Response, is estimated to take critical services out of the response areas for up to an additional of one to one and a half hours, assuming no traffic in ideal weather conditions. Additionally, these increased response times will have a significant negative impact on emergency survival rates, as well as increased unfounded costs for emergency services for the towns of the Neshoba Valley, and whereas the NVMC is one of the largest employers of the Town of AIR and the Neshoba Valley region, employing approximately 500 jobs, the loss of jobs and negative impact to the local and regional economy will be devastating, and whereas the NVMC to date has not received a viable bidder to assume the operations of the hospital, and the federal bankruptcy judge in July 31, 2024 ruled that Stuart Medical, the current owner and operator of NVMC, to proceed with closing the hospital by August 31, 2024 in only 30 days, as opposed to the 120 days per Massachusetts state law, and whereas the impending closure of the NVMC by August 31, 2024 will create a healthcare desert in the Neshoba Valley region, impacting over 100,000 residents of the Commonwealth. Increased emergency response times to over an hour, cut off direct local access to the public healthcare to the region's most vulnerable populations, create the loss of over 500 jobs, and shutter the entire emergency response service for the 15 towns of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center, a man-made public health emergency currently exists. And whereas Governor Maury Healy has the power, set forth in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 17, Section 2A, as follows: Upon declaration by the governor that an emergency exists which is detrimental to the public health, the commissioner may, with the approval of the governor and the public health council, during such period of emergency, take such action and incur such liabilities as he may deem necessary to assure the maintenance of public health and the prevention of disease. The commissioner, with the approval of the public health council, may establish procedures to be followed during such emergency to ensure the continuation of essential public health services and the enforcement of the same. Now, therefore, the AIR Select Board respectfully requests that Governor Maury Healy take the following immediate actions within her powers as governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as follows: One, per Mass General Law, Chapter 17, Section 2A, declare that a public health emergency exists with the impending closure of the NVMC, and further instruct Dr. Robert Goldstein, Commissioner of the Department of Public Health, to take such action to assure the maintenance of public health by keeping the NVMC open and operational. Two, that the governor, per her public statements on August 1, 2024, that Stuart should adhere to the 120-day closure per Massachusetts state law, do everything in her power as governor to ensure the 120-day closure period. Three, that the governor work with the federal, state, and local leaders of the Neshoba Valley to develop a permanent transition plan with funding to ensure that the NVMC remains open and operational and ultimately transfers to a responsible owner. We, the AIR Select Board, hereby issue this official resolution on August 6, 2024, from the AIR Town Hall, AIR Massachusetts, and officially transmit this official resolution to Governor Maury Healy, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and Dr. Robert Goldstein, Commissioner of the Department of Public Health of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with official copies transmitted to Congresswoman Lori Trahan, State Senator Jamie Eldredge, State Senator John Cronin, State Senator Edward Kennedy, State Representative Donella Senna, State Representative Mark Rick Scarsdale, State Representative James Arciero, State Representative Michael Kusmerich, State Representative Natalie Higgins, and official copies to the Select Boards of the 15 affirmation towns of the Neshoba Valley region. Signed this sixth day of August 24 by Sean C. Copeland, Chair Christopher E. Taveras, Vice Chair Janice L. Livingston, Clerk, the AIR Select Board.
Thank you, Board Member Livingston. Next, I'd like to open up to a public question-and-answer period for questions and answers specific to the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. And if we could please only use up to two minutes, since there's a large crowd here, I'd like to welcome you up to the microphone, if you would be of your name and your address. And then Carly, if you could tell me when people want to share things with you.
Mr. Chairman, yes, please.
Oh, absolutely.
So I've been here 19 years, which makes me kind of a newcomer to this region. But within the first year of living here, I had a little bit of a health scare, first time going to Neshoba Valley Medical Center, and, you know, I was treated well, and it comforted me to know that this place exists, existed. You know, within a couple of years later, there was another just little injury that my wife had, same thing, just went up there, knew that this existed. And when my daughter was about three years old, she was dancing in our living room, she fell, landed awkwardly on her arm, and it was a Sunday night, 9:00 p.m., and we knew we could go right up to the Neshoba Medical, get her checked out, and she was back home with her cast within a couple of hours. And, you know, as a father, an injury to your child is, you know, more concerning than anything in the world, and having this place here, it just, you know, made us all feel safe. Going into this uncharted area of, you know, if this does close, you know, I'm scared, and I think we all are scared too, right? That's why we're here. And I look out now and I see all the support. Really, anything that I've ever dealt with that can be, you know, in a public forum, you're going to have 50/50. You're going to have these people against, these people for, you're going to have a lot of arguments. Raise your hand if you're against this place closing.
Yeah, I know, I didn't know.
I weren't that very poor yet. Okay. So how about a show of hands? Who wants this place closed? Hey, look at that, 100%. When have you ever seen that in a town hall? Everyone here, straightforward, wanting the same thing. So I know Governor Healy is a basketball person. This one's a layup. This one is very easy. Come out here and speak with us. We have beautiful restaurants, coffee places. Come out here, see us, talk to us. Once you see what this will do to not just this town, these people here, the whole entire region, it becomes so simple. So please, Governor Healy, come out here, talk to us, break the silence, and keep NVMC open.
So I was born in AIR, and I was born in the hospital that is now Neshoba Assisted Living. There has been a hospital in this town, I believe since like 1929, 24, okay. Yeah, I could have, might have forgotten that ride. But my point is that there's always been a hospital, and the idea that this is going to be taken away. But what's really, really bothersome to me at this particular moment, because we know we have the support, is that the idea that Governor Healy, you have come across, it's like you're not paying attention to us, and between this hospital and Carney, you're talking of approximately 300,000 people being negatively affected. There is no winning on this deal. And yet I have seen more conversations about you and your ice cream trade than I have about you and this scenario. And it's great that you had a conversation with people last week, and it's great that they gave, you gave them 10 minutes instead of a one minute, which who has any time to say anything in a one minute? Is, you know, that's great, you finally heard, okay? But here's the thing, Governor Healy, you, when you ran, you promised to be a leader. And yet you are not, because a leader will look around to see what their people need and make sure that they've done everything in their power to make sure that their people have all the supplies, resources, support, whatever's needed. So Governor Healy, be a leader and support this hospital and Carney staying open, because 300,000 lives, that's just the people that live here. Now, some of you are going to have company, okay? And God forbid, they need assistance, okay? So, and now, let's do the ripple effect. Okay, some of people are going to go to Leominster Hospital. They can't handle it. They can't handle what they have already. They're not going to be able to handle all. So now, what could have been done in one, two hours, four, six, oh my God, we forgot you were still in that bed over there. That is the scenario that's going to happen. And it's not because they didn't care, it's because they're overwhelmed, and there is no reason for this situation. So Governor Healy, be a leader and let the people here know that you're paying attention and that you care.
I don't like public speaking, so I'm not really going to say much, other than I would like to also reiterate that I invite the governor to please come and speak with us. Come see the town, come see the people that are going to be affected by this. As somebody who worked my last job, I spent a lot of time at the Leominster Hospital Emergency Room, I can't imagine the negative outcomes that are going to happen when our EMS services have to go out to Leominster or to Emerson, and how bad that's going to be for calls that come after that, when those EMS services are already out. So just to reiterate what my colleague said, please, Governor Healy, please come out and see us and fight for the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. Now, if there's anybody who would like to come up to the microphone?
My name's Audrey Sprague. I'm a registered nurse at the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. I can't thank you enough for that letter. That's exactly what we need, is for her to declare a public health emergency, and then, you know, things get rolling into place that could help, sorry, to help save us and save the hospital. Where she now has said that she wants to support the 120 days, what, and Senator Eldredge, you probably know, what can she do or has she done since she said that to, like, back up and have teeth to it? Is there, you know, any steps that she has taken or is planning on taking that you know of, to do that?
Yeah, right, just through the chair, thank you, Audrey, and thank you so much for having that meeting with Governor Healy and speaking at the rally last week. Yeah, that is part of our letter is, okay, we appreciate Governor Healy saying that she was going to, you know, require the 120-day notice, but we, myself, Representative Sina, and legislative delegation specifically asked for a letter to be sent to the bankruptcy court, because it is implied that the administration was okay with the closure by August 31st. So to say that we do not support the immediate closure and that we demand and enforce through DPH Commissioner Goldstein, at the very least, a 120-day notice. But that correspondence has not happened yet, so that's why we sent this latest letter.
Great. And also just for an update, on Sunday night, just for a time thing that we talked about with EMS, Pepperill, which is one of the towns that Neshoba gets quite a few patients from, had to go to Emerson at 10 o'clock at night, and their turnaround time with no traffic, and they got off pretty quick. They said they got the patient off the stretcher onto a bed. Their full turnaround time was two hours and 15 minutes for one call, so.
And that's no traffic?
With no traffic, 10 o'clock at night.
Hi, my name is Ed Gosside. 109 Compton Street, Pepperill, Mass. Forty-eight years old. I was having a heart attack, was taken to Neshoba, and they got me out of there in a matter of minutes, air flight, so. Hate to see it go. So, I hate to see it go, very important to me. And the other thing that really bothers me every time I'm reading the newspaper is, this guy who owns it demands that his debts are taken over by the buyer. I've never heard of such a thing. These bankruptcy laws are absurd. I mean, could you file bankruptcy and say, hey, my neighbor's gonna take my debts if he wants to buy my house? I mean, it's, this is absolutely crazy, okay? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Laven, Director of Stone Soup Kitchen. I just want to advocate for people who do not have transportation. We live in an area that does not have public transportation, not reliable to public transportation. And I know that you're all working, I'm not yelling at you or anything, I'm just bringing forward that there are quite a number of people that I love very, very much, that if this hospital closes down, I honestly don't know what they're gonna do.
Thank you.
My name's Peter Henning, I'm a selectman member of the Town of Rockham, and I appreciate the action that you've taken on this, this letter. I want to bring this back to my board and work with them on crafting something similar to the administration of Governor Healy. I have also been disappointed with Governor Healy's reaction on this. It seems like Carney and Neshova Valley Medical Center have sort of been collateral damage in this whole process going forward between the bankruptcy court. And I understood that the Commonwealth had an attorney that was a party to that proceeding down there. I don't know if there was a motion appear, not what was proceeding. But I don't, I don't think the urgency, what I've seen reported, of the situation here is getting communicated down there. And the bankruptcy judge is making the decision on those proceedings based on some narrow vision of who the debtors are, and do we have to make whole again, but not what the impacts are. And bankruptcy law, I guess, will convolute, I don't understand it all, but it's, for a process like this to go forward and impact this region in the way it is, is just unacceptable. So I appreciate all the advocacy of our legislative delegation. Senator Eldridge certainly has been taking the lead on this, and Representative Rep. Garisdale. But we certainly need to communicate that this is not acceptable, and Governor Healy needs to be more aggressive in making sure this doesn't happen. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Paul Harris, Moleskine. My office address is at the Metablocks Building here in Air, common or hard. Warranted certified with a pediatric surgeon, that practice here, thirty-three years since yesterday.
Happy anniversary.
Taking care of infants, all the way to the elderly, in my office over the last two weeks. You know, the support that I get, that the hospitals get from the community is just amazing. And you have to understand that this is, I always looked at this as a community hospital, never mind a medical center, for a small community hospital. We're family. And I mean, the nurses staff, the doctors, the people who work at the hospital, we're This is not easy. But for me, I feel, I don't feel bad for the doctors, I really don't. I think we could find a place to work, but the people are gonna lose their jobs, the nurses staff. More importantly, for our patients, our family, we take care of them. We see them in the grocery store, we see them on the playground, we take care of them. The secret of patient care is caring, caring, caring for the patient. And we care for people day in, day out, as if they're our family, and we think that's how we take care of them. So I can understand quite honestly why the Massachusetts Governor Healy is upset with Stewart, all upset with Stewart, all upset with Stewart, I can't believe we cut corporate road and corruption institute than they have. But to think that we're gonna let Stewart continue to victimize the patient, our population and our, the people who live in this area, I just don't want our patients to continue to be collateral damage. And to know that we have perhaps the means, that Governor Healy has the means in which to right the wrong and not do so, to me is morally unacceptable. So, you can see I'm pretty worked up about this. This has been my life, caring for this community and the many, many communities that this hospital serves. It's a lifetime work, it's a lifetime work for people who work at the hospital from post clinic to maintenance of the nursing staff, they all want. Sort of closest hospital to a gem, it could never be, it could never be replaced. And it would be just an absolute tragedy to see this place blow, but there's really
Hi, Heather Waters, I live at thirty-seven Fletcher Street. Lived here about six years now, and Dr. H fixed mine when I covered two years ago. I don't understand what a qualified bid is. It seems like there have been a lot of facilities who have made offers. And if it's just up to Stewart, how is an organization that failed at keeping this hospital going able to be responsible for determining who's qualified to run it now?
I'll just, I could just, I don't have an exact answer for that, it'd be cheap. But excellent question, and I think that the hope now is, you know, given that the bankruptcy court has, and the judge has made a decision, but now there's this window for a separate purchaser, right, for the, for the two hospitals, and therefore there's a little more, the standard, if you will, shifts more to the administration, the Healy-Driscoll administration, that could work to, to secure qualified bidders for the two hospitals. So that's, that's the short explanation of how this is an opening, and completely agree that Stewart is clearly, should not have, nor should be evaluating what is and isn't a qualified bidder. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Chief Johnston.
If I might add the EMS component part of this, so I'll speak first on behalf of the Town of Air. We're fortunate enough where we staff our station with a combination department, where we have four career staff, and we back foot with either off-duty members or call department members. So we're able to staff our two ALS ambulances at the paramedic level all the time. Having said that, we all here understand that most of that time now is gonna be spent, rather than, say, an ambulance tied up for forty minutes total, we're gonna realize that that time's gonna be pushed out to an hour, an hour and a half. So we understand those two ambulances could be on the road more than they ever have been. But as Select War Member Tavarez said, we're entering uncharted waters, we're just guessing at that time. We don't know how quick they'll be able to get the person off our stretcher, you know, at the proceeding facility. So those numbers are just, you know, our best guess in this. We really don't have a sample, you know, until the hospital when they're closed. And as such as Audra said, you know, Pepperell was over two hours. So those are the things we face, and I think behind the scenes collectively, we've been meeting with all the departments that are affected by that, you know, fire chiefs, EMS coordinators, to see what our best, you know, along with the DPH representatives, which were assigned to us when the news first broke. So I think it's important to remember, like, the services will be there, we just don't know, so we can get two paramedic ambulances out, but we don't know what the next, what's the next call gonna, you know, be? Is it a mutual aid ambulance? Are we gonna be able to get somebody there in a fire truck to help that person? And this goes across to the Neshova Valley area. But keep in mind, collectively, the fire chiefs and the people who run the EMS departments are working on that behind the scenes, but it really is uncharted waters, because our budgets are set, this certainly will cost more money as we move forward as the hospital will close. And like I said, we have combination departments, you know what I mean? We don't have larger career departments where, you know, throughout the region, there's small numbers, and once you take that, specifically that ambulance out of the region for a little bit, it's a longer time for you before they're back into that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm not from Air, I'm from Shirley. My name is Tenny Comar, and I'm gonna ask the attorney here, Senator Eldridge, a legal question, okay? Being asked, that's been my emergency room for some other medical doctors, and I've been taken there at two o'clock in the morning by ambulance. And another question, why not deal with this private equity mess that we have, which I hope brings about a national law of change? Why can't we just eminent domain the buildings?
Amen.
Okay? You want to go with that Bain Capo, come in and shut down Toys R Us? I mean, who takes a toy store away from children, okay? Private equity is doing this, like, same thing to all over the place, and this is, and they're doing this to mobile home parks. They're taking land out from underneath people. There are many other businesses. The problem is, is that immediately when it was bought, you know, for-profit hospital and land, the building was immediately switched into a trust, okay? And then this is where the problem lies, is the insane mortgage payments. Like I said, eminent domain for the public good, that's what goes through my head. Anyway, thank you.
Hi, my name is Spencer Lane, thirty-one Coolidge Road. Actually, I've only lived here a few years, but I guess I really just have a question. Because I've lived in a few places before, I'm almost sixty-eight years old. I've never seen a hospital have to shut down just because of financial issues. I mean, I know some get outdated and they can't be restored, but just strictly for financial issues because of mismanagement. So I guess my, one of my questions, or my main question is, who was representing the hospital and the community at the hearings in Texas? Was there anybody there? And if not, why wasn't there?
I think that's excellent question. I mean, I don't think, but I don't think anybody was.
No?
That's an excellent question. I've been asking myself that question too. Well, I think that the state would have sent someone there.
I mean, this isn't like a normal bankruptcy. This is like a factory that's going out of business, not gonna be manufacturing widgets in the town anymore. I mean, this is, this is something that people's lives depend on, and I think there should have been some accountability at the hearings. I understand that the judge even had some comments about what was going on, but his hands were tied or something, I don't know. So, anyway, I guess that's it. Wondering.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I think Senator Markey had a letter to the judge, is my understanding. And as far as the judge, I think the only question he could answer was about the bankruptcy. But I agree, where was the state? Where was the state? They knew what this was gonna be?
The governor knew about this. I mean, it's not like the bankruptcy hearing was going on without her knowledge, or it didn't blindside her, she knew it was gonna happen. Where was it? All right, that's my answer.
Another question we can ask Governor Healy if she comes to see us.
What?
Another question we can ask Governor Healy if she comes to see us.
Well, I think that part of the problem, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, right away upon the announcement of the hospital being foreclosed, well, first there was the confusion of everything got a bid, and then the next day it was like, oh no, two didn't, or a qualifying bid. But then the governor announced like, oh, we're gonna, don't worry, we knew this was coming, but we're gonna create a database, because those always work. And we're, so that you're gonna know where you can go. Well, first of all, databases take a while to get up and running, we all know that. But there again is, that, what a defeatist attitude that was. You know, oh, we knew this was gonna happen, but we're building a database. Why not have boots on the ground? Again, ice cream trail, got a lot of recognition and a lot of talk, hospital, oh, we're gonna build a database. So, explain it to me. But then you add on, the other problem is that, did the cap get removed from Devens for housing? Did that get changed?
That has not passed yet.
Oh, that has not passed yet? But that is being considered, which would mean more housing could go onto Devens, which we all agree, housing is needed. But you might want to think twice before you move here, because there's gonna be no health services, okay? So how, Governor Healy, can you want to do that because you want to, you know, get a roof up people's head, which we all agree, we all want a roof up heads, some people might have kids in their basement, they want out, who knows? Some of you are going, yeah. But we're not gonna have health services, which will now make it even worse. Okay? So again, Governor Healy, you have shown us a defeatist attitude, and we need you to step up to the plate. You're capable of it. You were Attorney General, you're governor, you're capable of stepping up to the plate. But we need you to step up to the plate for this, because lives are at stake, livelihoods are at stake. This cannot happen. It is just unfathomable that we're even discussing this. And like the gentleman said, that this hospital is not closing because it's rundown and couldn't be repaired. It's closing down because someone on a yacht with two planes, that a board of directors gave him a hundred million dollar umbrella, hell, it could be more. Oh boy, I think I said a very little word, I'm so sorry. You know, that even the, any board of directors thinks that that's acceptable? No. Everything has to change. But right now, Governor Healy, we need you to front and center on this issue.
Amen.
Yes, Senator Eldridge.
If I could just add to what Select War Member Livingston said about Devens, and this is a letter that Representative Sina and I just got maybe two hours ago, but to Select War Member Livingston's point, there is a letter from the Devens Enterprise Commission, and I won't read the whole letter, but one of the paragraphs says, to the point of, you know, not just sort of the human impact, but the economic impact, the potential closure of the Neshova Valley Medical Center, the third paragraph says, quote, "The closure of the Neshova Valley Medical Center will have significant impacts on a large, vulnerable population, as well as the many social support services within Devens, including Taravista Behavioral Health Center, Clear Path..." services within Devens, including Taravista Behavioral Health Center, Clear Path for veterans, Transitions Women's Shelter, Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry, and Shriver Job Corps, not to mention the Federal Bureau of Prisons in Devens and Shirley. With our aging and at-risk populations in Devens and the surrounding region, the need for the services that Neshoba Valley Medical Center continues to grow." So I just wanna note that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I'm sorry, my name, okay? Ms. Peppin?
You have to say, uh, adios.
Ms. Peppin? Okay, we can come back to her. Miss Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pauline Conley, Cambridge Street. I'm smiling, I'm not here to contradict anything you say, I echo everything you have said. We all know the bankruptcy filing was done in May, so this is not new news to most of us. Couple of concerns, um, from what I've read about the court proceedings. The Commonwealth was represented, I believe a law firm was named Dentons, something I've never heard of before, but they may well be a Texas-based law firm, because that's where the bankruptcy filing gets located. I believe the MNA was, uh, represented as well, but it was a firm I also didn't recognize, multiple name firm, may recognize it, also probably based in Texas. I read a comment, a quote, from Judge Lopez, who said, and I have multiple articles on my phone, I was trying to download them today, it didn't work, but anyway, the judge said he was conflicted with granting the order to close the hospitals on August 31st because there was no opposition to Stewart's motion. I have no, no knowledge of whether that was true or not, but at least it's a quote, direct quote from the judge. Perhaps we need to contact him. As far as supporting everything you do, I will not change that position, I will support all you do and all you try to do, as representatives of the elected, the residents of Ayr. But what I would like to ask the board, not necessarily tonight, but to address the concern on Facebook, that we just take the land by eminent domain. We've been down that road in the past, we took Depot Square by eminent domain, we were asked to take Devens Crest, we made a very strong statement, the board did, about the fact that we couldn't do that. The public needs to understand the process, to know it could take one to two to three years and cost us millions, millions in tax dollars. So I would hope that you will address that in your next meeting, or at least issue a statement, so everybody understands, oh well, what that entails. It's not just go up there and take the keys, it's go up there and hand them a check for millions and millions of dollars, and that is negotiated, as we all know, or most of us. So I would ask that you do that for your next meeting. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Even better, because the news media can see it.
Oh, I know. So, so was it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You usually have people telling me to back away from them. So, now I have, now I don't know what to do. So here's the thing, as, as we've all seen on numerous occasions in our lives, whether it be local or in the news for another state, Connecticut, uh, you know, about a decade or so, um, eminent domain does not happen overnight. For the town of Ayr, for example, to take eminent domain, first of all, there'd have to be a few conversations, so there's a few meetings, okay? There would have to be a review into like, well, if we did think about this, where would we get the funding from? Because this is the estimated, and in this case, it's probably billions, okay? And then you've gotta go to town meeting, okay? So you gotta declare it, then you gotta have town meeting, well, you have to have a certain amount of days before you can even have town meeting, all right? And now town meeting, everybody's gonna be for it until they hear how much it's gonna cost them, and that's the thing, we don't have the money for it, okay? The state does, maybe, but this town does not. And then you go into land court, so then you gotta hold that month's of thing. Meanwhile, hospitals closed because we're, and it could take years. So, I can tell you that if I thought that I could snap my fingers and it could be done, I would, okay? Because this impacts all of us. But unfortunately, eminent domain is not an option, because even if then we took it over, who's running it? We can't handle running it. So then we'd have to have to cut some type of board reformed to be able to run the thing and everything? That's just not in the cards for the local level, okay? But is it something that maybe should at least be discussed? That's what I'm saying, they don't have this defeated attitude. You should be standing out there saying, okay, today, we're looking at this option. Okay, come back tomorrow, oh, that one didn't work, but while we were talking about that option, we segued into this, and now we're talking about this, and you explore every option. Every option. So that when you go to bed at night, you know you have looked at every option. And again, we have not seen that from this administration. Come out and tell us that you're looking at something, then come out and say, okay, that one didn't work, but we're gonna look at this. But instead, we've got this defeatist attitude. Well, you know what? We don't have it. The administration has it, but we're not going down without an argument.
Amen.
Hi, I'm Zoe Harris, I'm from 50 Groton Harbor Road. Just wanna point out that I was born in Fitchburg Hospital, and that doesn't exist anymore, so this is an alarming trend in the area for my lifetime. I understand that the thirty-day ruling was a federal ruling in Texas, just kind of mind modeling that this court in Texas can have such an impact on our lives here in Neshoba Valley. And the hundred-and-twenty-day notice is a state law, so is that part of the problem? Is that we're dealing with federal ruling versus a state law of the hundred-and-twenty days? Does the federal supersede that in that case? And if we declare the state of emergency, that we're requesting that supersede everything? That's my question.
I, I am a lawyer, but I do not practice one on television. But, um, that's a great question, and I think that's something that we've been analyzing is, is bankruptcy court obviously being federal, you know, how, how does that relate to, to state law? But we, we do believe it is possible for, uh, you know, under the public health emergency, under the, the state DPH guidance of a hundred-and-twenty-day notice, for that to be invoked by the administration. And so Governor Healy has talked about that for the first time last week, thanks to a lot of the advocacy in this room, and, you know, now we'd like that to be strictly enforced. So we, we do think it's possible, but we, we are, we are looking to get a, a more specific answer on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Cunningham again. I just, I'd like to ask a question, I guess, of Senator Eldridge and Representative Sina. Uh, I understood that what's happened here is a textbook example of how a for-profit enterprise coming in and basically pillaging a resource and then walking away with their, you know, all their ill-gotten gains, um, but that there had been a bill filed in the legislature to do something on hospital reform or governance reform. Can you tell us where, did that go forward, or is that still before the legislature?
Yeah, so the, so the, um, the Senate, uh, did pass legislation, it's because, uh, the House, to its credit, had passed a bill around community hospitals, but the Senate more recently, in the face of the Stewart crisis, included legislation that, uh, would have provided closer reviews of, of any hospital that is owned by private equity, because, because obviously that's the foundational problem. Um, so that did pass in the Senate, and now there's negotiation between the House and Senate, uh, you know, hopefully to pass in an informal session. Um, there was, a colleague of mine said it did pass legislation to give the government greater powers to maintain healthcare services if hospitals were to close. I, I did vote for that, but it did not, did not pass the Senate. So clearly, it's, you know, it's, it's a bit of a, a moving entity in the sense that these things are just coming upon us and we're trying to get as indicated as possible in the legislature.
And I appreciate how laws, you know, pass at this point are probably to weight of this situation, but, but greater urgency, I think, needs to be applied, uh, to, to get any legislation passed that could prevent something like this from happening again, because it's, you know, we, we find ourselves in the position we're in because we don't have the tools, perhaps the governor doesn't have the tools, uh, to do what, what needs to happen.
Right. I may say, I mean, we, the fact that, the bill, there is a provision of the bill that talked about the land issue, what they, Stewart did, uh, to prevent that from happening in the future, um, I, I will say that looking throughout the past years, the fact that the state have helped Stewart with millions of dollars year after year, um, to a point in which little and we found out this is not feasible, um, the fact that any, any private entity, whether, if the state is providing some assistance or some support, that those finances need to be public information, that needs to be disclosed, and the fact that this was not the case here with Stewart, and we're asking for those numbers, I mean, the fact that that's the case, and we, we need to make sure that that's, that doesn't happen. So, um, it, it's infuriating to see what has happened to us as, as residents, as patients, as, and I'm sure the people that work at the hospital, they wanna be, work there, they wanna provide care, and I, I thank you for that, Doctor, who gave a so powerful state, statement, thank you. Um, it, it's just very, very concerning, and certainly, thank you for your question, because we, we have attempted to try to, you know, minimize the, the impact, but, uh, we, we need to look ahead, I think we need to look in the future, and, and, uh, to see how, the best way, the best method for us to provide healthcare, and I think we have to have discussion on what entity, who do we want? Certainly, uh, you know, we have bills, we have ways to, you know, healthcare for all, and to make sure the government has a stake, has a role of that, because certainly, this is public, it's a, it's a public entity, it's a, it's something where we rely, just to, to be able to live. Uh, so we don't want a private entity to be controlling all of that, and I think that's why we are here today. So, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Matthew Murphy, I live at 95 Washington Street. So, kind of a statement and then a question. So the first is, when they declared bankruptcy back in March or May, my suggestion going forward for the administration, for any future administration, is let's take them at the word that they're bankrupt and start planning for a closure then, because they may have said, oh, we're gonna find a buyer, but their credibility is not the greatest, um, so in the future, I would take that back, is as soon as one of these healthcare entities declares bankruptcy, start playing the full worst-case scenario from that day one, and figure out how we're gonna make this work. Um, the second is, the statement's great, what you guys put out is great, how do we move the ball in this as citizens and get this done? Because we're now, the, the clock's ticking, we're now in a two-minute drill, how do we make this work? How do we get this finished? We're over the ball, we're over the goal line, sorry for all the sports metaphors, but, um, that's your best now. So, how do we help? What do we, what can we do as citizens that all came out and took time over ten, uh, day and away from our families to help you guys, so?
Thank you, yeah. Um, I, just this morning or this afternoon, I got a call from DPH, uh, that tomorrow they're going to announce, um, an in-person hearing on Thursday, August 15th, at 6:00 at the Devens Common Center, and a show, a virtual hearing on Monday, um, August 19th, at 6:00 PM. And, and to, to, also, we, we did, we're reaching out to the, the chiefs, um, of the, the area, particularly, I represent Shirley, Ayr, Harvard, um, and Groton, um, so reaching out to those chiefs and having a, a, a conversation with the Commissioner Goldstein, um, on, on this, to find out, okay, what, what are we doing moving forward? Um, and so I think that's very important, that we, we keep those dialogues and those discussions happening, um, so.
Representative, do you have any ideas?
Yeah, so, uh, this is gonna be public tomorrow, I, um, I did ask if I could share this idea. Um, Thursday, um, August 15th, at 6:00 PM, at Devens Common Center, and then the virtual hearing on Monday, August 19th, at 6:00 PM. Um, and this is from DPH, schedule social service closure hearings for Neshoba, um, and that, I think, will be public tomorrow, so.
Carly, is there anybody on Zoom? Yeah?
I just went like ninety down my hat.
Don't say that.
By now, I should be the media. My apologies. Okay, so, I'm now, I'm gonna catch my breath. Senator Eldridge. Representative Sina, I'm talking to all of you. Um, I know Senator, Senator Lavin was here, I believe?
She stepped out.
She just stepped out, okay. So, I'm speaking with Harley, a bunch of people. Okay. I had the privilege of watching hearings last week, and Google was an amazing thing. You can find links, and I sent the links to special people that I thought would be interested in this information. Um, from my own personal experience, I found it troubling that the people that represented the state of Massachusetts down in Houston, I found the attorney of the Massachusetts Nurses Association was far more in support of keeping our hospital open. However, the attorney that was representing the state, I do not know his name, he was too complacent, and he was far too easy, uh, far too easygoing with it. I found it was troubling that somebody that traveled that far on our taxpayer, taxpaying dollars, mind you, that they're gonna just sit there and be like, oh, no problem, we'll make sure all the patients and the doctors and all these jobs that we lose, it's gonna be fine. And I remember sitting there saying, wait a minute. And it was about three hours long, the first hearing, and not once, and I know there were others that were watching with me, however, not once did I hear anybody from Massachusetts state to fact that Dr. Delatorre is being subpoenaed on September 12th, and he is in constant litigations regarding international crimes, that he is being investigated about. And I can't understand, now, I'm not a lawyer, but my grandfather wanted me to be one, and he would be extremely proud of me today, so pray for Sugar, this is for you. Um, how can a bankruptcy federal judge, um, go against something that's being federally investigated? So my fear, so these are questions, comments, so take it as it is. They say August 31st, correct? However, if they go ahead and close it, and then on September 12th, Senator Markey, all the ones that, uh, is subpoenaing him, and they start asking questions about the Neshoba Valley Medical Center, well, we're closed, well, we need to see paperwork, we need to see what's going on here, who's running the boats, who's doing this, who's doing that, oh, we're really sorry, but we close on August 31st, so, you know, where's the accountability? Where is the integrity of this company? Uh, you know, I've heard he's on his boat in the middle of the Cayman Islands, and it's like, we're gonna let this guy get away with it? So my fear is, maybe this has all been going on behind closed doors, and just maybe, the state has their own agenda, and even though we're trying our best to put signs up across town, which my husband and I did with our own money, and I was out yesterday in ninety-degree weather, driving around town, putting up save the Neshoba Hospital, because I moved into this town ten years ago knowing that I'd have hospital and, uh, full-time fire, police, EMS, thriving town that got closed, and now you're just gonna take our hospital away. So my fear is, is that if the governor comes in and says, it's a public emergency, after August 31st... August 31st, how do we know that they don't have bigger plans to do something with that hospital? Whether it be a state hospital, whether it's something else? And obviously, we're not privy to that. However, I think that it would be a grave mistake if Governor Healey turns her eyes to this, because her election, for reelection, I believe, is 2027. So I think that people need to keep that in mind. And if I can speak for the families that maybe don't have good healthcare, that don't have the access like I do, where I've had to actually leave this area and go to Boston to find better care, I have the luxury. Healthcare is a necessity, but it's also a luxury. And we can't forget the people that don't have access. So I really hope Senator Eldridge and Representative Sina and all of you, that you take your job very seriously, because there's thousands of people waiting to see what we're going to do next. And I commend you for all of your hard work, but please don't forget about the Town of Air.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask our town manager, Robert Pompgran, to say a few words.
Good evening and welcome back. And as I said last week, I'll say it again, that closure is not a viable option. I think it's important, what Mr. Murphy asked, is what is the plan and what are the next steps? And again, I think number one, we need to continue to stress that closure is not a viable option, because actions do speak louder than words, and unfortunately, we've just had some rhetoric from the governor, but no action. So therefore, it looks like the plan, which they also don't have, is to let it close and let the chips fall. I hope I'm, I hope I'm wrong. But I think the key thing is that closure is not a viable option. So a couple of facts. I think we have to operate on the assumption that as we sit here on August 6th, there is no plan. And what the select board is trying to do, and all of you are trying to do, as far as next steps, is we have to continue to put the pressure on the governor to communicate, because there's been no communication since this started. We're sitting here on August 6th, and the select board, myself, and many of you, there's been no direct communication from the governor, except when our nurses out in Leominster, through the efforts of Mayor Mazzarella, were able to basically ambush her, forgive me for the term, in the hall, and got a whole eleven minutes. So the fact is, the governor keeps saying that Stewart created the problem. We all know that. And what happens to Dr. Del Toro and Stewart will be in the hands of the feds, the Department of Justice, Congresswoman Trahan, our U.S. senators, he's been subpoenaed to Congress, they don't know where he is. But while all of that happens, will take time, the hospital, that's not going to save the hospital. So the governor keeps saying that Stewart created this problem, not the state. I have consistently said, yes, Stewart has created the problem, but governor, it is our opportunity to solve the problem. We didn't create the problem, but it is incumbent upon her and every public official, from the federal level all the way down to myself and our boards and committees on the local level, to solve this problem. So closure is not a viable option, we know why. We must stay that course. Secondly, the state must and can, that's the key thing, must and can solve this problem. As of now, they're choosing not to. Why? Your guess is as good as mine. This is an opportunity for the governor, the select board has invited her, as many of you have, to come to Air, to come to the Neshoba Valley region with our federal, state, and local officials. Let's sit down and put together a plan for success. Now, what does that plan need? It needs three things immediately. One, we need a certified operator. And as Selectman Livingston and others said, many have brought up, well, why doesn't the town take the hospital? And the board will speak in more detail on August 20th about why eminent domain is not the proper fit for any town, not just Air. Could be an option for the state, but again, that's the governor. But we need an operator to operate the hospital. We need funding. And the discussion, we know that the state has funding, and perhaps there's federal funding, and maybe there's even some local funding. I hope the select board doesn't get mad at me for saying that, but what I'm saying is, we haven't even talked about that. No, we haven't sat down to talk about an operator, to talk about funding, and to talk about the plan. So the reason that the 120 days needs to be extended, and frankly, if I was the governor, and I'm not, I would have asked the Attorney General, right when this ruling came, to file an injunction or something. There's still been silence. The governor keeps saying it should be 120 days. Well, what is she doing? It goes back to actions speak louder than words. So, the importance of the 120 days at this point is we need more time. I've talked to Dr. Perla, the local president up at Neshoba, the people he's talked to, how can you put together a plan in three weeks? So at least, let's get the 120 days, as Senator Eldridge said, would like to see the governor ink that and take some action, so it's not just a rhetorical statement. So unfortunately, to Mr. Murphy's question, which is great, because I think we're all people of next steps and action, is, the frustrating part is we need the governor to respond, to respond to you, to respond to these towns. We need to meet, number one. Number two, we can't accept closure. You all know why, life is at stake. Closure is not a viable option, so let's take that right off the table. Meet with the governor, come up with a funding plan, so that there's a transition that we can keep Neshoba operating now, come up with the funding and the operator, and move to success. My final point, and I thank the chair for the opportunity. The signs are going up, which is great, and there's a banner, there's several of them. There's one of them up outside of Town Hall, and it says, and I'm going to paraphrase, and I may get it wrong, in it, it says, "To do what is right, not what is easy." We all know the right thing to do, we need to do it. It's not going to be easy, governor. It's not going to be cheap, governor, but in the end, it's the right thing to do. So please know that our next steps is to continue the pressure and the communication, and to get the governor out here is the first step, and to sit down and put together the plan moving forward. And so with that, I thank you all for all of the time and effort, and know that the Town of Air is with you 100%, because the stakes are too high, and closure is not a viable option, must be our only position on this. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Bert Gibson. I'm a retired staff sergeant, and in 1994, I closed Coupler Army Hospital because I worked in logistics. There was 250,000 veterans' families in the six-state region that received healthcare through Port Devon's grand close. I can't stand by and watch this hospital close. This hospital has saved my life twice. It's taking care of my kids, and my wife, my friends, and the kids that I've coached and that have gotten hurt on the field. This is a very important hospital. I also am the commander of Air for American Legion, and I represent a lot of senior citizens. Senior citizens need a local hospital, because the next heart attack could be the last if there's no hospital. I want to make sure that the governor knows that we're all important people. It doesn't make any difference what we look like, where we're from, or who we are. We are important. Save this hospital.
I'm Jeanne, I'm a quick speaker, so I apologize, but I've worked with the best. I gave half my life to the hospital, and, like you said, we are upset about losing our jobs, but we're more upset about the patients that are not going to get any care. As a financial council there, deserved high council, insurance is up through the group, and a lot of people are afraid, and that, so now they're not going to come, they're not going to know where to go. They come into our hospital as a stranger, and then they leave as family, because of the nurses. And it's like, hey, it shows we care about our patients. And that's what the bottom line is, and the gentleman said, it's all seniors, veterans, the ones that need the most respect. Now, right now, I'm looking at losing my job, but I'm caring about the patients that come. My husband, actually, he has got a patient, he's looking at poor major surgery. Dr. H is gonna, was gonna be doing one, but now his hands are tied. So now, it's like, we don't know what we have to do. So, losing insurance, my husband's health is declining. So, we just need that governor to be able to come out to the hospital and see what a great staff we have. And so, I drive as the best speaker, who just opened listening. Senator Eldridge, you've been on my side, and thank you all for coming. Thank you all.
My name is Jennifer Watson. I'm a nurse at the hospital. I've been working there for 15 years, and I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that most of us have primary care physicians in this area, and when we need testing, such as labs, x-rays, CATs, AMMs, nanograms, anything like that, we do it at Neshoba. So now, all these primary care physicians are going to have to refer us to another facility, and those facilities probably already, when you called me, your primary care appointment, you're going to wait a few weeks, a couple of months, and now you add all the population of this area wanting to make appointments for those things as well, and it's going to be forever to even get an appointment. So, in addition to us just wanting to save this hospital forward, as everybody has said, our family, because that's what we are, we need to think about consequences such as not being able to get your medical monitoring services done at the hospital. Thank you.
Dr. Hernan, Neshoba Valley Emergency Department, and I've got to use notes on this one, or I'm going to be on task. I've been an ER doctor since 2005. I've worked at an academic medical center, a city public health hospital, suburban, and now more rural hospitals. I became an EMT when I was sixteen and a half years old, over in Olten, Massachusetts. I promise you that I know what I'm talking about with respect to emergency medicine and emergency response. I'm not exaggerating when I say that some of our community members are being consigned to death by asking our injured and ill friends and family to travel an additional 25 to 30 minutes to adjacent hospitals. Not all patients have those minutes. I can think of the patients that I worked so hard with, a team of nurses, techs, secretaries, everyone in the emergency department, to save that life, even in the back of an advanced life support ambulance, even if the ambulance isn't the third one out, mutually delayed response time. Not every patient, even with the best advanced cardiac life support, can survive without the capability that we have in an emergency department sometimes. This will certainly increase mortality and suffering, and there is research that can be findable to document some of these things. The more we learn, the more we understand how the bullies of Stewart have masterminded our current abuse, and as these days go by, we are learning how expendable we are to Governor Healey and Public Health Commissioner Goldstein. These two agencies that have the power to protect this community are choosing to say their hands are tied, in the case of Governor Healey, or to say nothing, in the case of Dr. Goldstein. Their decision has already seemingly been made. We don't have a chance. And it feels like the state is watching, the bullies are bullying us, and to that, that I could speak on personally. There is nothing worse than suffering, feeling bullied, feeling like you're being beat down, and people are actually standing around and watching. That feeling of, they know what we're going to lose, they know that over 110,000 people are going to have compromised healthcare, creating a relative care desert in Massachusetts. They know that, and yet still, the silence. And silence resonates across the state. People are thinking, they must be okay with it. Locally, fire chiefs, EMS directors, understand exactly what's going on here, but at the state level, I think they think, well, we'll work it out, you know, other hospitals have closed, we'll work it out, it'll be fine. Where is the feisty fight from them? Where's the outrage? How dare they do this to this community? How dare they inflict this upon my patients, Dr. Harris Moitz's patients, all of the physicians' patients, the nurses, the attention, the techs? The amount of love that comes from a community hospital, taking care of a patient, is why I choose to work in a community hospital. I prefer to work in a community hospital. I have never been in a place that is more loving and caring and supportive for the patients that come through our doors. I'm hoping that we can start to hear a feisty fight from other communities, from boards of health, from other town managers, from Springfield, from Boston, from Worcester, from other hospital agencies, that say, you know what, closing a community hospital is always a bad idea, and regardless of politics, regardless of money, we can stand up and say, closing a community hospital is a bad idea. Everyone should be clamoring, absolutely not. Because if this can happen in our community, it can happen in any community. And thank you to everyone who is here, who showed up in this room, everyone behind me, who are the people clamoring and saying, this is not okay, because closure is definitely not a viable option.
Any other speakers? Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank State Representative Senate, State Senator Jamie Eldridge, Board Member Livingston, Board Member Tavarus, and Town Manager Pompgran. There's nothing else?
So I like to look at historical data, so I would encourage you to look for where a hospital like this was closed, anyway, and find out if it actually gets solved. I just think it has to happen, so, so I would just encourage you to look.
Chair?
Yes.
If there's nothing else, so that we can get this letter sent, I move that we adjourn.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And I've never used this, but, adjourn.